At this time, I would call the Wednesday, May 17th, 23 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin. Uh, Mr. Roche. Ms. Yuckman.
Here.
Mr. Wormbrun.
Here.
And Mr. Welch.
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
It's time we will, uh, entertain the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I trust that all have seen and read the minutes from the April 19, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Can we call that for vote? All indicate by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Minutes are approved. Are there any continued public hearings?
No.
Hearing none. Anyone who desires to testify tonight needs to stand. Whether any testimony that you give, whether any testimony that you give this evening will be true and accurate to the best of your ability. Thank you. This time, we will turn to new public hearings, and I will call for hearing ZBA 2020, 2023- Major Dash O1. An request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Jim Planey, increase the maximum total access drive width to 21 feet, 54% of the lot width at 410 West California Avenue in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Have a staff report, please.
Uh, yes.
Hold on a second, Marcus. Since these are both related cases for the same property, we're, we will be presenting them at the same time.
And though they are two, um, similar cases, they have different standards for...
They do, so we'll take different, um, different roll calls for them, but, or different votes for them.
Aight. Contemporaneous with the hearing in ZBA 2023 Dash Major Dash O1, we call for hearing ZBA Dash 2023 Dash Min- Minor, excuse me, Dash O2. A request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Jim Planey to reduce both the required side yards to 3 feet 9 inches, 3.75 feet, or 25% at 410 West California Avenue in the R2 Residential Single Family, in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. May we have a staff report?
Yes.
On both of these cases.
Thank you. Um, the Urbana zoning ordinance limits total access drive width to 45% of a lot's width and requires minimum side yards of 5 feet. The proposed 25% yard reduction requires a minor variance, and the access drive width increase requires a major variance. I will present the information for both requests together, and the board should vote on them individually. Um, for the minor variance request, the board may approve, approve with conditions or deny the request. For the major variance request, the board may recommend approval or approval with conditions to city council by a 2/3 majority vote, or deny the request, at which time the request process stops. Uh, staff did receive an additional public comment after the packet was distributed. This has been provided to you at the beginning of the meeting. Staff does recommend denial of both variance requests as they do not satisfy the variance The existing two-story house on the lot does not have a garage. Um, in the photo on the screen, um, it is the house on the left, the white house. Uh, it shares an access drive with 408 West California, which is on the right side of the photograph. The owners want to build a house with a two-car garage. The requested var- major variance would allow them to access the full width of the proposed two-car garage from the street, which is in better condition and easier to navigate than the one-lane alley at the rear of the property. The requested minor variance would allow them to build a wider house. The existing house encroaches a foot into the west side yard. Additionally, the basement access, which is allowed to encroach up to 6 inches with, within up to 6 inches of the west property line, encroaches to within 2 inches of it. Uh, the property is 3,890 square feet in area and is located on the north side of West California Avenue between South McCullough Street and Birch Street. But first, we'll see some additional pictures of the property. Um, this is looking at the rear of the property from the alley, so we're looking south. Uh, you're looking, on the left side, that concrete drive is the shared access drive. Uh, you're looking at the rear of the house and where people are currently parking. On the right side of the picture is the fence between 410 and 412 West California. Uh, this is looking north from that shared access drive towards the alley. Uh, this is a little closer, close-up of the rear of the house. Um, this is the parking area for 410, uh, West California, as it does not have a garage. Uh, this is looking down the west property line. Uh, this is the basement access that's encroaching into the side yard and the little roof that keeps water from going into it. And this is looking at 412 West California to the west of 410 West California. Uh, they have an access drive coming off the street, but it simply ends in a parking This is the location of the site here. Uh, it's all residential, except for Lille School, which is a block to the east. Uh, the property and everything surrounding it is zoned R2 Single Family Residential, except for Lille School, uh, which is zoned Conservation, Recreation, Education, and the future land use of the entire area is residential. Um, the 18, original 1853 plat created equal-sized lots that were just shy of 58 feet wide. The 1940 Urbana zoning ordinance required a minimum lot frontage of 40 feet, so those lots met the requirement at the time. Sometime later, the then owners of 410 gave almost 29 feet of lot width to the owners of 412, which increased 412's lot width to almost 90 feet and reduced 410's lot width to almost 30 feet. Uh, similarly, or contemporaneously, um, 408 West California Avenue apparently transferred some lot width to 410, which brought 410 up to its current 39.2 foot of lot width. Um, if these land transfers occurred before 1940, they would have, not have been in violation of any zoning regulations. Then subsequent zoning then made, uh, 410 legally non-conforming when it started requiring a minimum lot width of 60 feet and minimum side yards of 5 feet. Uh, city planning staff recommended several alternatives to the owner prior to their submission of the application that would have required no variance or a lesser variance. These are, uh, explained on page three of the memo. The applicant's justifications for the variance are threefold. Uh, the narrowness of the lot, the, that the city presumably allowed the narrowness of the lot to be created, and that the maximum access drive width should be based on a set width, which penalizes narrow lots. Uh, the Urbana zoning ordinance requires the Zoning Board of Appeals to make findings based on variance criteria. There are no minimum number of criteria that must be met to grant a variance. For the minimum threshold of special circumstances or practical difficulties of the parcel, the narrow lot is not a significant difficulty, as it still allows a house to be built with vehicular access. In addition, the lot already has a street access drive and has access off the rear alley. Staff provided the owner with four options that would allow them to meet their needs without requiring variances. For the second criteria of special privilege, staff find that the request may not be considered a special privilege as the lot is narrower than any nearby lot. Excuse me, let me restate that. Staff find that the request may be, right, may not be considered a special privilege as the lot is not, lot is narrower than any nearby lot. However, the variances are not necessary to build a reasonably sized house with adequate vehicular access. There is already a house there with vehicular access. Uh, the third criteria is self-created hardship. Staff agree that the owner did not create the narrow lot, but that condition was in place for decades before they purchased the property. The fourth criteria is alteration of the character of the neighborhood. Uh, staff find that the neighborhood is not characterized by two-car garages that take up the majority of the street frontages of the lots. It is characterized by houses that face the street, narrow driveways, often shared between neighboring properties, street parking, and garages behind houses, often accessed but from an alley. The proposed variances would go against every one of these character-defining traits of the neighborhood: placing a two-car garage facing the street with the house hidden behind it, removing street parking, and adding a wide driveway that would make walking less pleasant in a neighborhood known for walkability. Staff find that this deviation from the character of the neighborhood should weigh heavily against granting the major access drive variance. The sixth criterion is that the variance is the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance that could accommodate the request. Staff find that there are several alternatives that would comply with the zoning ordinance and requiring no variances. Overall, staff find that the criteria weigh against granting the variances. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the following options in case, let me hold on that. Uh, so here is, uh, the plat of survey that was submitted with the application showing 412, sorry, 410 West California. Uh, zooming in a little bit, uh, you can see that the side yard at the front of the house is 4.27 feet, less than 5 feet, and at the rear, uh, the side yard is only 3.95 feet, so a little over a 1-foot encroachment. Um, and then, if you, we go to the next page. Uh, there is a close-up of the bas- basement access that shows it's within 2 inches of the side property line. This encroachment would presumably be taken care of once the new house was built. Uh, and then, these are some house plans that were submitted, possible, uh, house plans. The top one is showing an attached garage at the rear of the house that could access the alley. Uh, the bottom one is showing the preferred, um, option, which is an attached garage on the front of the house accessing California Avenue. Uh, the next page shows, zooming in to the front of the preferred option, uh, how cars would pull into and back out onto California Avenue, which is permitted by the zoning ordinance. Um, and then, a, a close-up of the, um, garage attached to the rear of the house exiting into the alley option. Uh, the final page is showing the right-of-way requirements of the city. Uh, this is a shot from Google Street View looking east down West California Avenue. Um, I put this in here to kind of show, uh, this is 412's access drive and 410's shared access drive. Um, but you can see that there are no garages on this block that exit out onto California Avenue. They are either, uh, access drives either accessing garages to the rear of the property, or they may have, um, garages that are accessed directly from the alley itself as 410 does. Staff recommends that the Zoning Board of Appeals deny the request for a major variance in case number ZBA 2023 Major 01 to increase the maximum access drive width, as it does not meet the criteria of a variance, for granting a variance. Similarly, staff recommends that the ZBA deny the request for the minor variance in case number ZBA 2023, um, Minor of 01 to decrease the required side yard depth, as it does not meet the criteria for granting a variance. Uh, that is the end of my staff report. Uh, Andrew Fell is here to speak on behalf of the applicant James, sorry, Jim Planey, um, and also, uh, James Planey, uh, the son of Jim Planey and neighbor, uh, of the property has, um, been designated as able to speak on Jim Planey, the applicant's behalf, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Yes, go, go ahead.
Anyway, how does, um, the neighbor at 408 feel about this?
Um, we have not had any comments from the 408 neighbor.
And what would happen to the shared driveway if this building went forth?
It would continue to be shared. Uh, there is a shared access easement that was recorded, I think, in 1930 or so, and that continues into the future until it were to be extinguished.
I see. So how far does the shared driveway go back? Like, at what point does it stop or cut over? Does it go all the way to the alley?
Well...
Doesn't look like it.
As it is written, it goes, it stops short about 10 feet because there used to be a shared garage. So the shared access drive went back to the shared garage, um, but both residents use it to travel all the way back to the alley. And I would say that it is not necessarily the city's concern to enforce or determine the intricacies of the shared access easement.
So, I have some things that I was reading in here, and I guess I could, um... I personally don't like garages on alleys. Um, having had one, um, they're not well-maintained, they get ruts, and it's horrible when there's snow. And I think that putting a garage off the alley here would not be a good idea. Prevent somebody from having any backyard whatsoever. And as for, um, houses in the neighborhood, we've, in, in this neighborhood, we've had, um, two new houses built over the past 30 years, and one is being built right now with the garage right in the front.
Hmm.
And I do not object to that. Um, you know, they're, they're new houses, so they're gonna look different anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But these are, all of these lots are narrow in terms of having a two-car garage. So I, I do not object to this. Um, there was one new house that was built that had, um, a garage put to the back, and it was, it was a bigger lot. So I, I don't object to that.
Could you speak into the...
Oh. And I don't see it as...
What did you see? The, it was, um, what was...
It was slightly to the rear.
Okay.
It was, it, as opposed to being attached.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, you know, the, to the houses, the two houses that were the most recent, well, they all replaced, um, houses that were very dilapidated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not sure I believe that this house was built in 1926, and I know that on the records, unless you would look at the...
I looked at the property tax card, and that's what it said.
Oh, that's no, that's...
Okay.
You, you really have to go to the city directories and see if there was someone who lived at that address. Um, and when they were built, doing their records in the 1950s, if nobody knew the, uh, age, they just put one on there.
Okay.
All garages were 1929. That's just the way it...
Okay.
They just did it.
Sure.
So I, I don't, I don't object to the, I, I object to, I would rather not have a garage off an alley. And, um, when you look at the other end of that alley, you can't even get through because it's so overgrown. This end is decent, but if we ever get snow again, it's a problem. 12 feet is very narrow.
Mm-hmm.
I had a 12-foot. It's very hard to maneuver. And, what else do we have here? Um, a couple places here, uh, there's a disc, it talks about how the city allowed a lot to be platted. These, these were not plattings. You know, the original plat was done, um, James Busey's second edition of Outlots, and it's two, two blocks full of those outlets. And what would happen is that somebody would say, "Would you sell me 4 feet of your, your lot?" And they would say, "Yes." And they would take it to the recorder's office, and the recorder would say, "Somebody's brought me something to record, and I have to record it." And I think no attention was really paid to this until the 1970s, when the city started to get very unhappy with the recorder's office for doing this. And all the time that I worked as the assessor, I don't think it really got resolved. I'm not sure it's resolved today. You know, the city just pays better attention, you know, to get it before it happens.
We occasionally get phone calls and emails where the, um...
A lawyer?
The assessor will contact us and say, "Somebody is wanting to do this, is that okay?" And, and we'll talk about it. So it's, it sounds like it's a little better than it used to be.
Yeah, maybe, yes, because it, it, it got to be a very big argument. Um, so, so this is not platted. This, this was done without the city knowing anything about it.
Oh, you mean the, the lot width reduction?
No, it was, the city never knew anything about any of these things.
Yep.
And if you, you can't see it on your map, but on my map, I can see that this was, um, if you look at the property tax numbers, you can see that, um, parcel number 017, I guess it's Lot 1, had been divided into two lots.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and if I remember correctly, we, we had to combine them because they were getting two tax bills. Uh, there was probably a house on one of them at one time or something. And the one at 412 had been at one time, two, two individual, uh, tax parcel numbers.
Okay.
They were combined to make one. But the, none of this stuff was done with plating. It was just, "Oh, you sell me a foot, I'll send, sell you a foot."
Right.
And that went on all over the city. So, anything that says that the city allowed something to happen is just really not true.
And just, uh, just a point of clarification. Um, so in the, in the staff memo, we don't describe it as anything that the city agreed to.
Right, I, I realize that.
Okay.
But, um, I saw that, I, I read it a couple times, but I just wanted to make that point, that people did this all the time. And, um, it, it created problems, and one of the things that happened was that people would, somebody wouldn't pay tax on a parcel number that was created, and then, and then somebody would buy it for taxes.
Mm-hmm.
So we tried to combine these things. Um, I don't really object to the side yard. I would prefer that, I, I want to know why, and I guess I can ask them why they wouldn't feed them or replat it to give them a little more feet. That's my only question, if they're relatives.
I'll, I'll let you ask them that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But other than that, I, I, I don't have any problems with it.
And, and the city doesn't necessarily object to a front-loading, street-loading garage?
I know that.
It's the, the two-car wide access drive width.
I, I will remark that on Nevada Street, I can't remember how many years ago, there was a house that was built on the property line. And there was a narrow drive like that right between the two of, the two houses, very narrow. And the, one person wanted to put an addition on the back of their house, but they were right on the property line, and they wanted to build their addition right on the property line. And, uh, the zoning board agreed to that, as did the city, to let them build on the property line. So, you know, we do stuff a lot like this, and with, you know, um, air conditioners.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, I don't really object to this.
If this would pass, uh, is there enough room to park two cars in the driveway, not in the garage?
Uh, that would depend on how far back it would be. Um, presumably, the, the front, minimum front yard depth would be 15 feet, and the minimum access drive width, uh, I believe, would be, for two cars wide, would be 18 feet, so, yes.
So probably, what we have here is, you could park four cars?
At the...
Two, two in the garage and two out of the garage?
Presumably, yes.
And then, I...
Well, hold on a second, I'd, I'd like to clarify. So the, I mean, nothing here is, is being tied to site plans, it's just the concept of, of allowing a wider access drive. So we don't actually know what the final plans would look like. Um, so I, I don't think we can speak to how many cars you'd be able to park there. But it would be, it would be a two-car-wide driveway. So presumably, you could park two cars side by side somewhere along it.
Well, I saw 24 feet mentioned.
So any, any, any plans are simply thoughts?
Yes, yeah.
Um, and I, I take Kevin's clarification, uh, very gratefully. Um, there is a minimum front yard depth requirement and a minimum access drive width requirement for any house that's built.
What, what is the minimum depth away from this, from the property line on that block?
A, a minimum, uh, 15 feet. It's 15 to 25 feet average of all of the houses on the lot, and that, in this case, calculated to that minimum 15 feet.
15 feet?
So as long as you didn't have something longer than 15 feet to drive and park in the driveway, you should be okay. But, again, there, there is no site plan to, to attach this to.
And can you explain this basement access to me? Uh, is, is that like a stairwell, or is it just...
Yes, yes, it's a in-ground stairwell.
And that's the only way right now to get there?
I'm not sure. Um, I get the, I believe I was told that it is not used currently. But again, um, this house would be demolished and that...
Right.
Basement access would be moot.
And, and my guess is that when the house was built, well, that was before they deeded that amount of land, which is pretty amazing.
Just a comment, um, about the character of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And I did drive through Pepper Alley, whatever you call that, Cedar Alley, Pepper Alley. Um, I also noticed two unlicensed cars where I think the garage once stood, perhaps. There are two cars there. Um, it's clear to me that if you kept that access drive and built your garage, say, sideways in the back, so that you entered your garage from the access drive, that you could either enter, um, go out toward California, or exit through the alley without a problem. There is a lot of space there in the back. And in terms of keeping the character of the neighborhood, you know, this is a neighborhood that has front porches, that's homey-looking, um, with trees, and I just hate to see that changed. Um, and I think keeping the access drive, having your garage somehow in the back, um, is okay. And I would frankly hope that the house, the new house, isn't so close to the street that it, um, kinda hurts the neighborhood appearance.
Any further questions for staff? Thank you. The petitioner, wish to be heard. Come forward, please.
Is your mic on, Andrew? I can't tell.
I thought it was, sorry, I thought it was. I'm in the unusual position tonight of trying to convince you to vote against what staff recommended, but I believe that what we're asking for is justified and reasonable. So of the two requests, I guess, do you have a preference? Do you want to go through one first? Pardon? Side yard, okay. One of the, where the side yard ties tangentially a little bit into the driveway issue, which we can maybe get to in the garage, in the driveway garage part of it. But the primary reason asking for the side yard reduction is just to be able to get a better house on the lot. We have, it's, we have, the setback of five feet on each side is pretty narrow. And the, we don't think it's a very onerous request because the existing house is 3.9, or yeah, 3.95 feet, and we're asking for 3.75 feet. So we're asking for about this much more space of the setback. Two, less than two and a half inches is what we're asking for. So the, to me, it seems a reasonable request. The reality of the situation is, on the east side of the house, we have a three-yard, or a three-foot easement for the driveway. So we can't build, we obviously can't build within three feet for sure, but we also have to leave enough room that a car can drive by there. And if we put a wall of the house there, we can open a window kind of thing. So our reality is, we can't build closer than five feet on the east side of the lot because we'll inhibit the easement for the driveway. We're asking for the request because there's a possibility on the alley end of the lot where the easement ends, and the easement goes, and I don't know the exact number, 97 feet, I think, through there. So there's 20 feet or so of the north end by the alley that isn't included in the easement. And if we want to build something on the north end of the lot, we want to have that space just where the easement ends on the north end for the alley. So that's kind of runs through the easement issue. So in our mind, what we're asking for is very minimal, minimal reduction in the side yard from what is existing currently on the lot. And no one seems to, no neighbors have objected to it, and it just gets us a better house. So that kind of runs through the easement side.
I thought it was, you wanted a reduction on the east side of the lot.
Well, we want them on both sides. We were requesting that on both sides. The reality is, no, we, on the east side of the lot is where the driveway easement exists. So, and we can't vacate that, right? So, and that's three feet. On the east side, there's a three-foot driveway easement on our lot.
And how far is that from the house?
Well, will it be from the house?
As the three-foot easement, how close is that to the house now?
Now? Well, the survey says the house is about eight feet four from the property line.
Okay.
And the easement is three feet. So
So it's five, it is five feet away now? If it's eight feet?
It's eight feet from the property line, right?
Okay.
Right? And
And there's a three-foot easement?
Yeah, yes, three of that eight feet is the easement.
So then there's five feet from the end of the easement to the house?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And how, excuse me, how wide is the driveway now?
Six feet. It's, the easement is six feet, three on this property and three on the neighboring property.
So it looks a little wider than six feet, but at any rate, it works. It's a working driveway, very functional access driveway. Yeah. Leading to the back of the house.
Functional, I suppose, yes.
So you're saying that if you were to have a window open on the house, you need to have so many feet for the window to open?
Correct.
The window to open, so as not to go into the easement?
Correct. Well, we need, it's not, it's not really just the easement because the easement is six feet and a car is, or a car's wider than six feet, and that's just the easement. So we need to, we need to leave enough room for whatever car the neighbor wants to drive down that easement to be able to drive down and not hit whatever we do. And if we have a window open, he has to not hit it. So what is that distance? I mean
Not a moving van?
Yeah. So that, I mean, that's kind of the gist of the side yard request. The driveway one is a little more nuanced.
Could I go back to the side yard?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we have the five-yard, five, five-foot setback right now. You're requesting 3.75 feet?
Correct.
So the new house would be 1.25 feet from the easement? Is that right?
Well, minimally, right? It could be, but what, I mean, I can only say this anecdotally. As the architect, I can't design a house that the neighbor car is going to run into. So I, if the easement's only three feet, the house has to be five or six feet off of the property line to make sure that the neighbor's car doesn't hit it when he drives down the easement.
Right, so we have our three feet and our five feet, we're back to our eight-feet equation. So what you're telling me, I guess, is what I'm thinking, is you would not build the wall of the house would be five feet from the middle of the driveway?
Well, I mean, currently, I could. I mean, the setback is five feet. So I think maybe what's being confused a little bit is currently, the current house is, we'll use eight feet, it's a little more than eight feet, eight feet off the property line, right?
Right.
The easement is three of those feet. So right now, the house is five feet off of the easement. We could build the house, if we wanted to, two feet off that easement currently under, by rights right now, because our setback is five feet and we have two feet from the easement. That, the reality of that five feet probably holds for the length of that easement, just in the nature of what we have to build to not have the neighbor's car hit it, right? So we, there's not much we can do on the east side till we're past the easement. And once we get past the easement, that may be where we want to build our garage closer. And so that may be a point where, where the, it doesn't make sense to leave that space anymore and we can reduce the easement on that side of the house as well.
Okay.
Honestly, since you have to have the driveway, access driveway there anyway because of the neighbor, wouldn't this be a kind of an, if your two-car garage faced California Street, you have the cutout for the two-car garage plus this access driveway?
Correct.
So that takes a lot of grass out. I mean, how, how much? I'm going to call it grass for lack of a better word, but in the front yard, don't you have to have a minimum number of open space? And you put a two-car garage there with an apron, plus you have the access driveway, they're not going to have the minimum number of open space?
Well, so open space is just handled on the entire lot. So it doesn't have to be, you know, a front, it doesn't have a certain amount in the front versus the back or any minimum in any, in any given area.
So how much open space is required for this kind of lot? And then what's the maximum footage, square footage for a house that can be built there?
I will let you know here in a second.
I just thought there was some requirement for open space.
There is, but it can be on the front or the back.
Yeah, and the way we calculate open space is not very straightforward. But in this zone, which is R2, correct? Okay. In the R2 district, the minimum open space ratio is 0.4, which does not necessarily translate to 40% of the lot, but just think of it as that, I suppose. The maximum floor area ratio is also 0.4. So on a, this just under 4,000 square foot lot, 0.4 of that is, what is that? Why can't I do math in my head right now? 1,600? That sounds about right. Yeah, four, four times four. Yeah, so 1,600 square feet of house is what you could get there.
Of?
Of floor, however many stories. If you could fit 1,600 on four stories, I suppose you could do it.
And so, you know, putting a garage on is going to consume area on the lot, whether that's at the front and the house is behind it, or whether it's in the backyard and the house is closer to the street. So it's a matter then of where you would prefer to have your open space and where you would prefer to have the garage. It's all going to consume open space. That there is currently gravel parking now, and that would then turn into a garage.
Or yard.
Or yard, right, yes. But all of that would be regulated through the building permit process. We would make sure that any house met all of the other development regulations.
I believe you wanted to address the other part of your
Sure. Talk about the request for the driveway width. Okay. The reason we, I'll start with, believe that request is justified. It's currently in the zoning ordinance. The width you're allowed for a driveway is based on a percentage of your lot width, presumably under the zoning ordinance, under a minimum lot width of 60 feet. That gives you a total driveway width, I don't know offhand, 27 feet, something like that. So on, under the ordinance, it insinuates that every lot that is legal in the city of Urbana should be able to have a 27-foot driveway if they wanted to. I believe that there should just be a minimum, it shouldn't be based on the percentage of a lot width. I mean, there is a, there is a maximum, but if you, but the wider, the more land you own, the wider driveway you get, curb cut you get, I guess, doesn't make a lot of sense, at least in terms of how the minimum one is defined. So on our lot, the minimum, the percentage of lot width gets us a curb cut of a little over 17 feet. If we had a curb cut, one curb cut for our lot of 17 feet, that would be ideal. We could live with that. We want a 16-foot curb cut, maybe an 18-foot curb cut ideally. The problem is that that's our total curb cut that we get, and three feet of that is already used up in the easement of the shared driveway. So our only option is, and we could have a new curb cut, but it can only be 14 feet wide, which is wide enough for one car to drive in. So the idea is, we want to get a curb cut, and one of that was in our illustrations off of, for Drive Off of California, is a curb cut adjacent to, or it could be a little farther west, adjacent to the existing one that gets us a two-car width curb cut. And with a driveway that comes off of California, we, it's true, we have a 15-foot front yard setback, but we can't put a driveway, or we can't put a garage 15 feet from the property line because we can't park a car there. So the whole idea is, we're trying to get cars off the street. So a garage off California minimally has to be set back 20 feet from the street in order to park a car off the sidewalk on your property. And with a, with a wide enough, with a two-car curb cut, we can get two cars in the garage and a visitor can park in the driveway. If, without this variance, if we try to put a garage on the front, our curb cut's 14 feet wide, so it's too narrow for two cars. So we, we, if we set the garage back far enough, we can widen the driveway out to get two cars in there, but it's set so far back, we can't get the open space we need. We don't have enough room to build a house behind it yet. So that's the reason for asking for the wider curb cut. We absolutely explored coming in off the alley. One of the things that happens, and there's an illustration in there that we prepared of, when you come in off the alley, the narrowness of the alley doesn't allow you, on our narrow lot, part of this is our lot is so narrow, we don't have the turning radius to get into a garage. Because imagine the narrowness of our lot and a garage. We have to be facing our garage to get two cars in it because we're so narrow. So our garage off the alley has to be set so far back south because we don't have enough room to make the turn to get back to the garage. So once we do that, we run out, our open space is gone because we've now, we have to push the house and cram it so far south, and we absolutely now are building right on the front yard setback. So the idea of a garage off of the alley side, just, it wasn't practical. It ate up too much yard and it, and the, the the other factor really of it being impractical is I lived on the next block for 17 years. The alley doesn't get plowed, it doesn't, it's not maintained, it's so overgrown, you can't drive down it half the time. It's just a horrible place to have to get your car in and out of every day if that's your everyday driveway. And the other, the other thing that sort of goes along with that, if you live in this neighborhood and have to back your car 120 feet out of your one-lane driveway, that's really hard to do. And I had to do that for 17 years too, and it's not pleasant. So, I mean, those are the reasons for the requests of the driveway. So I'll take questions, I guess, or explain more if you want more explanation.
Yeah, well
Well, I would like to touch, let me, let me step back a little bit because I said, some of the setback issue also goes in with the garage issue and the driveway issue. Is, is, one of the reasons we're asking for the setback is ideally, if both of these variances are granted, we will have a driveway off the California side. Our, the narrowness of our lot, a normal garage is 24 feet wide, and we have 28 feet, 29 feet to build on, even with this variance. So we need to get around the garage to a door, right? So we want the variance so we can get a front door up towards the street and don't have to bury the door to the house back behind the garage, right? That extra foot and a half of this easement on the east side gets us a door out on the street instead of buried back. So that's one of the reasons we're trying to do that.
The extra?
The, the, the reduction in the set, I said easement, I'm sorry. The reduction in the setback on the, on the west side, I'm sorry, allows us to just get more house right there so we can get an entry to the house that's more appropriate for any house.
Of course, you're not required to have a 24-foot wide garage. And that's a choice, isn't it?
Well, in this case, the garage we would put on there would be outside 22 feet, which is, which is pretty narrow. I mean, there are garages narrower than that, but not much for two cars. 22 feet's about minimum to get two cars in.
And you can't put anything on the side?
Well, a car is only, what, seven foot wide?
A 22-foot wide garage. I spend a lot of time looking at garages. You got 20-foot wide garages. They started out like in, oh, that subdivision that has all the houses close together, near Thomas Paine School. They started out with 20-foot garages. That did not work at all. So then they went to 22-foot. And they're not much better. You can get in, you can open your door, but you cannot store anything on the side of your car. So a 24-foot garage gives you, you can put, hang some tools, but a 22-foot one, it's pretty hard. And a 20, it's impossible.
I would also, I think, like to add, although it's probably, couldn't factor into the case, again, saying I've lived in this neighborhood, I, a lot of these houses don't have garages at the front because they were built before there were cars, right? The house I lived in was built in 1910. They didn't have a car, so they didn't need a garage. And that was, that was the case for most of them. And I think that's why they put the alley there, right? Because eventually, we had to deal with some cars.
Well, and I would say that they didn't have garages, or the first garages they built were so tiny because they had, you know, the little Fords. They wouldn't fit a car. You would see people put additions on the front You would see people put additions on the front, or some, some houses would just, you know, cut an area halfway down so that the hood, you know, you could drive your car in and then there was a place for your hood to go. Because, you know, they just didn't have them.
Well, yeah. I would just say, if you've looked at, for instance, 207 Nevada, you know, which has alley access, that owner has put a nice garage that opens up onto the alley and doesn't seem to have any problems with that. You know, using the, the, he doesn't have an access drive choice. So he's only using his alley with a relatively new garage and seems very happy with it. 207 Nevada.
Is that where the new house is?
No, it's not a new house. It's, it's a brick house. It's the second house from Ray Street on Nevada, going west, West Nevada.
But there's a house, isn't there a new house going up on Nevada with a garage right there in the front?
I would have to look. I haven't noticed that. But notice that.
So it, I go back to the question of why they don't give them some feet on the west side.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't understand why, you know, the city had the suggestion of 412 would sell or turn over a few feet of their yard.
James, I'm sure can answer this question officially, but I believe it's against, they can't. Legally, they cannot do it. Something has to do with their.
White Kent 412 deed to land back.
Thank you, yeah. So I am James Planey, so I'm the son of Jim Planey, not to add to any confusion there. And, yeah, I've lived with my wife at 412 since 2018. And I've been down here since 2008, and my wife still teaches at Urbana High School. I'm actually with the University of Illinois now. The, the option for land changes, I think, was partially due to the fact that it's a familial connection there, if there was some option there. But my parents, in purchasing the land adjacent to our house, did not want to impact us financially in any way. And, yeah, they didn't want to affect or redo our, like, land assessment and our mortgage and things like that. So I don't, we never considered that directly as a, as an option between Jim and myself. And frankly, when we got our mortgage at 412, I was a graduate student and I wasn't considered, you know, financially worthwhile to be on the mortgage, so it's mostly managed by my wife at this point. We're both on the deed, but. I don't know if you have any other questions for me specifically, but.
Getting to that, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Planey? Yes, no? There we go.
I don't know. Can you answer why your father didn't know this when he bought this property? That he was going to have difficulty building a new house on such a narrow lot?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I can't answer that directly. I know they were, and we were excited too, that they're able to actually, like, join us down here in Urbana. I won't give exact ages, but they're, you know, in their 70s right now, and we have our, our granddaughter, and they want to spend more time down here with us. And so I think he was, that opportunity wasn't going to come again, so I think he was excited to, to get that land. I, I didn't have a specific conversation with him about building restrictions at, at that point, so I wouldn't be able to add context to that question. I'm sorry.
I guess, then Andrew, just when you said that you're on your east side, you're, or you're just asking for this much really? I, can you go through that part again on the?
On the, on the east side, the, if, if you look at the, the survey that you have, the, the.
What?
One of these?
Marcus, is it in your, your presentation? Uh, which one? Oh, geez. Oh, that is a PowerPoint. Geez, I thought that was a PDF, sorry. Yeah, full screen. Bear with me. And can I zoom?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the, the lot we're talking about is the one in the middle. And you can see, kind of halfway up, it says W1/2 Lot 8. See that designation, big, big letters there? Right next to that, it says 3.95 feet. That's how, that's how far the existing house is off the property line. So the existing house is three point, has, I'll say, a setback of 3.95 feet, and our request is 3.75 feet. So our request is about two and a half inches closer to the property line than the current house is. So we're, we're not asking for a whole lot more than is existing there now.
Well, that's the west side, right?
Correct, on the, on the west side. And, and our request is asked, asked that on the east side too, but we can't, we, we can't do it for, you know, 97 feet of this lot.
All that stuff.
Build a narrower house.
Andrew, is that gray dashed line, is that the easement line? Or what, where is the easement line?
Not, it's not really shown on here.
Okay, all right, well, that makes sense, because.
You have the 8.53 figure there that corresponds to what you were talking about earlier.
See, kind of like, up and below, well, where the other end of the arrow is, is the three feet.
And the one's 8.38.
Is our, hold on.
Okay.
Go down from here.
If the major request was denied, is there a good reason to approve the minor request, in your opinion? Does that help at all?
Yeah, they both help. Yes, we want.
They don't go hand in hand necessarily, I guess, is what I'm saying. Ideally, you'd like them to go hand in hand, but.
Correct, I, they don't, no, they don't go hand in hand.
Okay, thank.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any, any further comment from either, either view? All right, thank you. In light of all that has transpired since the staff report, is there anything additional from staff?
I, I did want to clarify, I know Nancy asked if, she said, you're not required to have a 24-foot wide garage, right? That, I just wanted to clarify, that's correct. You are only required to have space for two cars on a single-family lot. So however you can make that happen, then you meet those, that requirement. I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, other than to, I guess, remind everybody to stick to their criteria when, you know, when making your considerations. Thanks.
I just have one more question. In the major variance, you're asking for a 21-foot width, drive, access driveway width. That would be the width of the driveway in front of the two-car garage, right?
No, that's the, the width in front of the two-car garage is 18 feet, and three feet of that is what's already existing in the easement. Because, you know, because our, our calculation for our allowed driveway width has to include the easement that's already there. So three feet of our driveway width is used up in that easement. So with, without the, without the variance, we can only build a 14-foot new driveway curb cut.
I don't understand that.
If, if the variance is not granted, right? Our, and these numbers are close, but I don't have, not the, to the fraction of an inch. If the easement is not granted, we are allowed 45% of our lot width for our driveway access. That, that percentage is a total of about 17-plus feet. So we'll use 17 feet. We're allowed total driveway access width of 17 feet. We already have three feet of that, I'll go this way, three feet of that used up in the easement over on the side. So if we put a new driveway in, we have to use, that three feet's gone. We only have 14 feet left. So that's why we're requesting the, the extra few feet so we can get our driveway to 16 feet wide, so we can get two cars on it. Because the reality is, without a driveway that wide, ye, yes, we're required to have, to, to keep two cars on the lot, but without a driveway wide enough, we're going to have one car in the garage and one car in the driveway and the visitor, the other person that's parking on the street. We're going to put more cars on the street without this variance than with it. That's just the reality of it.
I just thought of one other thing that I should, I should clarify. The, so the reason that we have a, a percentage of the lot width that you can use for a driveway is entirely about the, the character of lots. We used to not have a percentage requirement, and we saw certain developments where, or certain houses where the driveway took up a lot, you know, a great deal of the lot, so 70, 80% of the lot, and it doesn't look great. And we changed our rules, so that's why they're in place. It's not some sort of an oversight. It's there, it's there for a reason.
If we have no additional comments or questions, we're ready to call for the questions. So first.
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
My comment is, once again, we're sitting here with four of us trying to decide this, and the major question would go to the city council if we approved it here. So I just want to remind everybody of that. Some of these things, you know, they're really close.
Can I ask a procedural question of staff?
Sure.
Okay. How many ZBA members are there?
Seven.
How many is it required to pass a major request?
Two-thirds. It's a two-thirds vote to send it to council. So three out of the four that are here tonight in quorum would need to vote yes.
Do we expect more members at the next meeting?
We don't, we don't ask. Yeah, we don't, we don't ask that far out.
I poll the board? Can I stake a straw poll of the board and ask how they're going to vote? And then ask for a continuance?
No, and, I mean, technically, technically, your, you know, your piece is done, so you probably shouldn't be sitting at the, at the table still.
Would you like to have this continued to the next meeting? I expect that, it is getting into the summer, but I expect that we would have probably two more members here for sure.
No guarantee.
No, there's no guarantee, but if you would like, I don't think you can ask for, like, advisory, but certainly, we wouldn't have any problem with continuing it.
I'm sorry.
I just, I need some clarification. What, to what end would we continue it?
And, and I guess I would throw in there, say you have a makeup of people who have a particular opinion now and who would vote on it one way, and three of those people don't show up to the next meeting, and then they're like, oh, gosh, I wish we would have voted on it last meeting because the three people who show up at the next meeting vote the other way. So you just end up kicking the can down the road simply to get a possibly different vote based on different members showing up.
I suppose that's one way of looking at it, or the fact that if there are more numbers or members, then you still have to have the same percentage, but it does, I guess, increase the odds.
My point was, is if somebody's on the fence, they should vote for it, and we send it to the city council. We're not making the final decision on the major variance. That was my point.
That's true too. That's true too.
But if people are dead against it, then they're dead against it, I guess, is kind of what I'm saying on that one.
And, you know, perhaps what would be helpful is, you know, having some vision of what the two-car garage might look at if it is going to face the street. And also, just, is it possible and have a two-car garage that is accessed by the existing driveway that is sideways? I mean, you have 39 feet, right?
There's not enough room to, even a, a parking lot, to, two-way drive on a parking lot, and you park 90 degrees, that's 43 feet, well, 42 feet wide. So in order to do what you're asking, we need minimum, we have to build the garage, probably 44 feet of width to pull in 90 degrees to it, be able to back out to get your car out. You can do it in less width if you want to jockey your car several times.
Yeah.
And you're going to build a garage anyway, I assume, if you don't get the major variance? It's just going to have a smaller curb cut? And is that like you were describing to us a few minutes ago? Potentially?
Potentially, yeah. But, yeah, the reality is, we're going to build a garage, and, and it's going to be attached to the house, so.
Respectfully, in response to the suggestion about voting yes if you're on the fence and sending it to city council, a vote from the zoning board of appeals to recommend approval should carry some weight with city council, unless they read the minutes and hear all of this and that you're basically deferring, like, you're not voting abstain, you're voting yes. So they would see that as a vote in favor. And they would have to really think that you made a bad decision to override that if they would have voted no.
See, I always wonder what the city council actually knows about what we do here. You know, if it's like one week from now, are the minutes already handed to them in their packets of 100 pages? And do they read them or not? And lately, anything that has seemed to be any part controversial, they have not agreed with us unanimously, let's put it that way. with us unanimously, let's put it that way.
So I would recommend you make a recommendation based on strong adherence to the criteria, and then it, you know, if it moves along to council, it will be incumbent upon us staff to convey that message to council, where they would make a final decision.
Are we ready to call then this, or vote?
Way too many pages.
You want to have this number right here?
No, I want to look at something. I'm trying to find the last page. So you want me to, you want me to tell you why I think we should vote for this? As opposed to...
Well, you can, you can make a motion and then get a second, just to open it up to discussion, and then, you know, and...
Okay, I move that the zoning board of appeals approve ZBA 2023 major dash 01, and send it to the city council.
It's been moved, is there a second to that?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion, Charles?
Yes, I just, I just think that it's going to be done. We're just arguing about a few feet here. It's going to get done anyway. And I don't think it's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't, I don't think it's going to be a visual detriment. And once again, I think, from our point of view, we've heard a good presentation of what potentially is going to happen, so I think we should just send it to the city council and let them figure out what they want to do.
Is there any additional discussion on this point? Hearing none, the motion has been made and seconded. I believe we are ready for a vote. Go call, please.
Before I do that, can I, can we tie this to the criteria in some way? I don't, we, we need something to go on, I, I think.
Are you ready to prove it?
See, we have so many negative things in here of, so I'm not sure exactly what you're, in reading this, your objections...
I mean, I'm, I'm not telling you how to vote, I'm just saying that we should, you should tie it, you should say, "Yes, it meets the criteria," if, or "No, it doesn't meet the criteria."
Well, to me, when I read this, all the criteria was in question.
Well, that, that's the staff opinion. That's not, that's you, the zoning board comes in and makes their determination. That's just our opinion, so...
Well, normally, I think if we just approved it and said that, per the discussion that we've had here today, that that's enough to approve something normally. Now, if you want me to specifically say that, one, I don't think it's going to be a nuisance to the adjacent property, that the, I suppose that the minimum deviation and those things, you know, we're, we're not, we're just talking so many minute things, I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, just something that's, something like, "It, it meets the criteria" would be fine, would be fine by me.
Something that meets the criteria.
I mean, you can just say, "We, we feel it meets the criteria, and that's why we're sending it for approval."
Okay. We feel that it meets the criteria, as discussed.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. Yuckman?
No.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
And then we got... That, that motion carries by the necessary margin to make it affordable to the city council at their meeting of...
We'll get that to you in a sec. June 5th.
June 5th, 2023.
We still have the minimum there.
Right. Now we deal with ZBA 2023 dash minimum dash 02, and again, we will call that motion for vote, or call that question for vote. Is there a motion?
I move that the ZBA approves, ZBA case 2023 dash minor dash 02. A request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Jim Planey to reduce both required side yards to three feet, nine inches, 3.75 feet or 25% at 410 West California Avenue in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Is it, is there more?
No.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
That motion has been made and seconded.
Okay, Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. Yuckman?
No.
Mr. Wormbrun?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes. That motion carries and is approved, does not need any further action. Thank you. Turn it, unfinished business.
There is none.
No business.
No.
Public input? No. Staff report?
Not this time.
Study session? Without objection, we are adjourned.